Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Town of Auburn Planning Board Meeting of Tuesday, August 14, 2018, now called to order at approximately 7:00 P.M. This meeting is being recorded and broadcasted live by local access programming. Is there anyone here in the audience tonight that is recording tonight's meeting? You're being run. Please rise and join us in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like to remind the audience, applicants, town administration, and each of the planning board members to please refrain from asking questions in regards to all matters discussed this evening without first being granted my consent. First item on our agenda this evening is, I believe there's two A&R plans today? First A&R plan is 12 and 14 South Edwin Street, which is on the Auburn Worcester line.
Can you bring that up on the...
Actually, this one's not mine. I'm for 25.
Oh, you're for Brooks. So the folks for Edwin Street are in the back?
No, actually, they're my clients.
Okay, perfect. Do you want to take Brooks Street first, Mr. Brooks?
Sure.
Okay. Excellent. So I'll pull this up on the screen if you'd like to discuss the purpose of the application.
The application is for the property of 25 Brook Street. Lot 60 is the existing lot right now. We're looking to create parcel A, which is going to be 23 Brook Street. It's greater than 40,000 square feet and has 160 feet of frontage as required. The remaining land on 25 Brook Street is in excess of 160 feet.
That's 25 is going to be 23.
25, the house and dwelling are going to stay 25. The new lot, parcel A, is going to be 23. As per the assessor's office.
Which is to the left of it going towards White Hill?
Yes, yeah, to the west, yeah.
I mean, going down the hill.
Through the chair, I didn't see any issues with the application as presented. Standard A&R plan meets the dimensional requirements of this home.
And that's the requirement in that area is city law?
Yep.
So it's 160 inch frontage?
Just 150, right?
160 is what's required, and parcel A has got 160.
Oh, that's how they're reporting it, the Collins Street.
And the existing parcel has got...
It's got in excess of 160, yes.
I have no issues, Mr. Chairman.
Nick, any questions?
No.
Scott? John? Wendy?
Make a motion to endorse the A&R plan?
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
And I'll start these on the other end. Just start from the bottom up. Scott's... I'll start from the bottom up. Through the chair, I did have to check on the availability of the address for the number 23 Brook Street. Originally, there was a subdivision of Pre-White Hill Run at 23 Brook Street. But then they changed that address onto the new road that they constructed. So that's the only thing I had to research. Other than that, it conformed with everything.
Came right from the assessor.
Yeah, perfect. I'm very grateful you guys did that in advance.
Yeah.
Thank you. I'll check it first. I'll get you any paper copies, too, just for the requirement. Okay, great. Yeah, I'll talk about it. Thank you. All set. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
I'm going to open. Keep that door open now. Should be open.
Okay, now we have the A&R plan for 12 and 14 South Edwin Street.
Okay. I'll put it up on the screen. Mr. Chairman, I had spoken with the legal team that represented the plan to support this application. It was a little confusing at first, but ultimately, the resident at number 14 South Edwin Street surveyed down on their property and realized that their line cuts off part of the house of their neighbor. So the two of them collectively agreed on a land transfer. They kept both lots conforming with our regulations and also rectified a dimensional regulation and nonconformity for both parcels, so...
So 14's given the parcel A to 12?
Correct. And it has at least 10 feet setback requirement, too, from the new property line, so that's also...
The frontage is 49, but that must have been an existing frontage from a long time ago.
It's extended to include this 58 feet.
Oh, okay.
And the original lot maintains its 100 feet. The thing that really threw me off, Mr. Chairman, was this line here, but it's just a fence.
A fence?
That's where they originally thought the property line was.
So they're encroaching on somebody else's property?
Yeah. So I asked, "What do you want to do with your fence?" He said, "We're going to figure that out. You might want to." So that was the other question I asked. "J.K. Realty Trust, are they aware that your fence encroaches like they do now?"
Now, lot 2?
Yes.
12 is a separate on 14, and then it's 12.
Yes. Lot 2 is 12, and lot 1 is 40. Just splits the town line.
Correct. Oh, okay. That's where the patch in Auburn ends.
Correct. And this doesn't require Worcester signatures because the change does not occur on Worcester.
On Worcester side, correct. To have a motion to endorse?
I've got a question. What's the frontage you have to have?
Since they're on a corner lot, they have to maintain 100 feet on both Oxford Street and South Edwin Street, which they provide.
Which they maintain.
Yes. The minimum frontage is just 100 feet.
You've got 49 feet in Auburn and 58 feet in Worcester. It doesn't conform.
It does. It's contiguous lot line despite the town boundary.
And that's, that house is probably old.
Yes, their deed...
Those have been forever.
Their deed reads that as one parcel, just in both towns.
Okay.
The dotted line isn't a long line.
Like my house on Boy Street, it's only, I think it's 60 feet of frontage to them. The bottom one, they're 58, 60.
Which makes for more sustainable development when you make the, you know, smell of lots as well.
Nick, any questions?
None.
Scott?
No questions.
Anything else, John?
Nope.
Wendy?
Make a motion to endorse the A&R?
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
All right. So I corrected an issue with H.S. and T. Group previously on some A&R plans. They only gave us four signature lines. So I corrected that on the Mylar and got an extra signature line, but our copies still only have four. But the one that legally matters is this one, so we can all sign that one, and then whoever wants to admit for the paper copy, it doesn't matter.
Can we jam two signatures on one line?
Or I can start from this side a little quicker. So Scott, start from the bottom up.
Thank you.
Matt, do you want my signature on that one?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, that one's mine.
The applicant is Masad Family LLC, requesting modification of site plan approval to operate a church within an existing church facility under section 3.2.3.3 of the Auburn zoning bylaws on property located at 188 Oxford Street North. This has been continued, oh, they'd like to continue it to September 11, 2018, at the applicant's request.
Make a motion to continue the hearing to September 11?
I'll second it.
I was just looking at something. I had a question. Are you distracted? We all right on time?
Yes.
Do we have a motion to approve the continuance?
Yes, I do. I just need a call.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Dick, we all right with the 7:05?
Almost quarter past.
Okay. The next public hearing is at 7:05. The applicant is Masad Family LLC, requesting site plan approval for the expansion of a dealership parking lot and vehicle storage on property located at 24 to 28 to 30 Faith Ave. The applicant is requesting that we continue this to September 11, 2018. Do we have a motion to...
Through the chair.
Do we, is it, no.
This request was based on still requiring a peer review, and the peer review results had not come in yet. I asked for the September 11 also because I anticipated that the board wished not to hold the second meeting in August, to which both the Oxford Street and the Faith Ave applicants were receptive to.
And as I said to you today, I think if the application, look, there wasn't approval by the state for this road taking anything, we're not having a meeting in August, a second one, so they'll have to come the next time, if and when it does happen. Everybody in agreement?
Yep. Per the applicant's request, I motion to continue to September 11.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. Next public hearing is 7:06 P.M. The applicant, again, is Masad Family LLC, requesting modification of site plan approval under section 9.4.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for the expansion of a dealership parking lot and vehicle storage on property located at 24 to 28 to 30 Faith Ave. The applicant is requesting that we continue this to September 11, 2018. Do we have a motion to...
Through the chair.
Do we, is it, no.
This request was based on still requiring a peer review, and the peer review results had not come in yet. I asked for the September 11 also because I anticipated that the board wished not to hold the second meeting in August, to which both the Oxford Street and the Faith Ave applicants were receptive to.
And as I said to you today, I think if the application, look, there wasn't approval by the state for this road taking anything, we're not having a meeting in August, a second one, so they'll have to come the next time, if and when it does happen. Everybody in agreement?
Yep. Per the applicant's request, I motion to continue to September 11.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. Next public hearing is 7:06 P.M. The applicant, again, is Masad Family LLC, requesting modification of site plan approval under section 9.4.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for parking, landscaping, and site layout reconfiguration on property located at 54 Faith Ave. This has been continued from July 24, 2018, at the applicant's request. Matt?
Mr. Chairman, this is the item that is awaiting special legislation from the state.
From the state?
Yes, sir. No word yet?
For the acceptance of the contract on the road?
Correct.
So what do, do we want to continue? Don't worry, we didn't have it.
Make a motion to continue the hearing to, what, September 11, Matt? September 11?
And we're all right with... Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, before we open the next hearing at 7:10, this is directly related to one of our decisions that we have, this request to move up the decision for 71 Curtis Street.
The audience. 71 Curtis Street. Next matter we'll take up is a decision on 71 Curtis Street.
Sure. So, Mr. Chairman, I provided a draft decision this afternoon, and I circulated by email, and I also provided copies to the members here today. The decision mostly reflects the 2015 edition of this decision. I also put in a timeline under the statement of facts that discusses the board's right within subdivision control lot to schedule a public hearing back in October of 2017 for rescission of approval. It's when we called him back in, asked why the project...
Because it's been almost two years?
Correct. 916 days. So we called him back in, told us of his reason, and we permitted with a waiver of fees to reapply, which was done in April of 2018. We kept the rescission hearing open while he was going through the process, and now that the board has closed that hearing and is prepared to sign the decision, it is my understanding through review of our regulations, state and local, that once the board, in order to sign the decision, we must first rescind the original plan. So we can do this one of two ways. This has to be signed tonight regardless. The board, I suggest we do that, and then we can decide if we'd like to hold the rescission tonight to rescind the original plan, or we can do it after the appeal period. My recommendation would be to do it this evening.
Right. Because why would we, what would be the reason to wait till after? We're going to approve this one tonight, sign it, then it's going to have a 20-day appeal period from when it gets to the town clerk.
Right.
And then we'd have, just during that time, what would affect it? We're going to, that needs to be rescinded, as I see it anyway.
Correct. Standard procedure would say you need to because you have an approved plan on the books. Technically, it's not on the books because it was never endorsed. So we have a little leeway in which we'd like to approach this. We're rescinding a plan that was never recorded. Ultimately, we're rescinding a decision instead of a plan, a little different, so it's not something that would be recorded to nullify a plan that was never recorded. So in this case, we have a little leeway as to when we'd like to rescind the original approval. It's entirely up to the board. I have no issues doing it now, but if the board wished to wait to follow the appeal period and do this on September 11, it's certainly okay.
Even if the appeal period, if somebody appealed it?
That's why I would rather wait, in case that, oh, that's why you may decide to wait if that were to happen.
But would that put us back where we'd have to accept that which was approved but never recorded?
No, we would not.
So then what, you? You're the board's attorney, so...
It's relevant either way because we're outside of the recording time for that plan. So I can say just rescind it because as a matter of form, it's too late. I agree. I just wanted to provide the board with its options.
If we rescind that and you approve it later, that has a 20-day appeal period after it's approved?
Yes.
Appealed by who?
Butters or the applicant.
Oh, anyone.
Yes.
We sign the approval tonight, the decision, then it goes to the town clerk, and from that date when she receives it, say tomorrow, anybody has 20, anybody can appeal it within a 20-day period. You, me, Rachel, Matt.
Anyone with a vested interest?
Dick. And so, I guess for any reason, but when you get there, you're going to have, I think, a pretty good reason, or the judge will throw it out on the spot.
Correct. And I firmly believe we're in a very defensible decision.
So we'll wait for...
I'd like, I think procedurally, Mr. Chairman, just because we were awaiting particular language on some of the conditions, especially the road improvements in front of the property. I had met with the town engineer and the applicant on site late last week to review the condition of the asphalt, and then worded the condition that is consistent with the town engineer's original recommendation. That was to reclaim the entire length and width of the section of roadway from the end of the public portion across the entire frontage of 71 Curtis Street. So that's reclaim, 12 inches deep, repaving with an inch and a half of binder and an inch and a half of Batumis top horse. It also included constructing driveway aprons, which was on our original approval, raising the manhole coverage to grade, and providing new curbs on both, concrete berms on both sides of the cushion. So those are...
Concrete berms?
Uh, Batumis.
How long, what was the length that wasn't, do you have it, John or Nick or anybody? What was the length that had frontage on 71? That's where, that where he lives, right?
Yes, it's approximately 271 feet. And then I added Mr. Regan's recommended condition about the silver manhole that suspects and that it, the applicant should not use an outside drop connection for that manhole, so use the design consistent with the other two manholes that were provided on the plan.
He was okay with that, wasn't he, John, last week? He said, I think he said he'd address that, and that wasn't a problem.
Yes. I also print that by him as well. And the new thing with this decision that we've been doing with all of our subdivisions since is we give them a two-year period to secure a performance guarantee, which was not on our original condition. So that's on there, too. Automatic rescission if they don't get the plan endorsed in two years.
Okay, so what do you want to do first, sign the conditions?
So what I would recommend is that the board take a motion to accept the decision as drafted, with conditions as drafted. And we took a vote originally, but it wasn't concrete with the conditions that we have before us now.
Okay, so we need a motion to accept the decision as drafted?
Correct.
With conditions?
I'll make that motion?
Do I have a second?
Quick question. On the last one, Matt, it says construction vehicles should not park within Curtis Street right-of-way while loading and unloading in a manner that hinders traffic circulation or sits anywhere standing. So you just can't park on empty truck on the road?
Leaving the sentiments just to make sure they have a detail if they need it. Maybe I don't understand your question.
The way that's written, you can't put the truck in the road while he's loading and unloading materials, but you can't put the truck in the road empty, just park it there.
Yeah, so what we did with other projects, it's like when they were moving trees or stacking lumber, so, and crane, whatever it is, moving materials across the right-of-way, the danger, it needs a detail. As far as vehicles parked or whatnot, that wasn't necessarily the concern when we drafted that condition. And this is, decision's passed. Well, in the lines of Ashworth Hill and other projects where there are loading materials that are large and have big swing or create a public hazard.
Matt, do we have to open this?
Not yet. I just want to take this vote first.
On the, on this?
Yes.
Sign me in the motion?
Yes.
With conditions?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote.
Okay.
Sign it?
Not yet. So now we'll go back to the public hearing and rescind the original approval.
Make a motion to rescind the...
Let me read that.
Yeah.
Okay. Do we have a motion to open the public hearing at 7:10?
We don't have a motion.
Okay. The applicant is Auburn Planning Board, requests to hold a public hearing to discuss potential rescission of a definitive subdivision approval in accordance with MGL Chapter 41 and 81 W. and Auburn Subdivision Rules and Regulations, Section 6.3, for a subdivision known as Paketog Farms at 71 Curtis Street. This has been continued from July 24 at the applicant's request.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, so the members that were present for that meeting are four members here. Nick was not a member at the time. So what we'd be looking for, now that we have a new filing and a new closed public hearing and a new decision prepared for signature, we'll be looking for a motion to rescind the definitive subdivision plan entitled Paketog Farms dated April 23, 2015.
I'll make that motion?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. Here, was it one upstairs?
Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead. It's the first one, right? Yeah. Thank you. All right. Thanks. I apologize procedurally. Can we just have a motion to close that public hearing?
Do we have a motion to close that public hearing?
We'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That was the second time. Sorry. Get all over the place sometimes. Just have another decision.
Next decision is 314 Washington Street. I think that's the fitness?
Yes. Very basic decision. All I do is reference the purposes of modifications to realign the parking configuration based on the inability to relocate a utility pole amidst the approved parking lot layout. I carried over all the conditions in the original approval, just as we did the last time they did a modification. All members voted in favor, and all members are eligible to sign. There's no additional vote required, just signatures. There's no additional vote required, signatures.
These are both Curtis Street. Again, look.
Try it once a year.
You're all right. Okay, associate member, vacancy. We'll continue to look for an associate member. August meeting schedule, Matt and I talked about it today. We didn't think there was probably a need to have an August 28 meeting.
Make a motion of that effect. Motion to forego the August 28 meeting and hold our next meeting on September 11.
I'll make the motion to forego the August 28 meeting and postpone it to September 11.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Additional content, Matt? Minutes of 7:24, 18? Minutes of 7:24, 18. Any questions?
Make the motion to approve the minutes from 7:24, 18.
Do we have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote. This meeting, September 11. Anything else?
Yes, sir.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.